Welcome to council meeting, and welcome everybody at home and everyone here. And first up, we're gonna, John wants to give us an update on some things that are going on here, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and just briefly, and there's still lots of information to come, so just know in the next couple of days you'll be receiving a lot more. I think, as you know, the Celebration of Life service will be Friday at 2:00 at the Matthew Knight Arena. We're expecting a large crowd and a large contingency of public safety folks, really officers from around the entire region and from many other states and probably from Canada. And so, we can expect several thousands of people to be over there at Matthew Knight. There will be a procession, a motorcade procession. The route has not been finalized yet, but it will be both here in Eugene and then will also be in part of Springfield. And it'll be opportunities for people to watch and view that in addition to attending the service also. Couple of things are, what we've done is we've set up what they call an incident command system, and really it's a, it's a format for when you're, have a large event that you're planning for, or if there's an emergency event that you're planning for, you can set up this structure, and it's a great way to organize the tasks. And we've invited the state fire marshal to come in and assist with that, and so they've brought a team down. They have a group of folks that can help provide some of that structure. They unfortunately have experience in exactly these kinds of incidents, and so they have that, those experiences that they can bring along. But we have many employees that are involved in the planning of this event as well, and really part of our goals, or several of our goals, are to honor Chris and his family, to honor the department and the profession, but also to make the community proud that, for the celebration, that Celebration of Life on Friday. And so there, there's still a lot of work coming along. And just, we'll want to continue to say thank you to the university, who has really stepped up in many significant ways. We have a lot of our employees that have just really come together to make this an appropriate event for this community, and there's many others that are stepping up in this community. But more information to come, and as you know, we will provide transportation for all of you over to the event, and we'll let you know when and where to, we'll pick that up and, and make sure that that, that happens. So if you have any questions, please feel free to drop me a note, give me a call, or, and we'll try to get back in touch with you, so.
City managers, thanks for the update. Then we'll go on to the next item, that is, an adoption of ordinance concerning the four year income tax for schools, and we'll put the motion on the table, and then we'll have discussion. Betty?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5046 concerning a four-year income tax for schools, adding Sections 2.2000 to 2.2038 to the Eugene Code, Chapter 71, and providing sunset date.
Second?
Moved in second. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I move to amend Section 2.2006 by adding the following sentence at the end of the section. However, nothing in the rules may require an employer to withhold wages for this income tax. And if I get a second, I'll speak to that.
Second.
Thanks.
Second, second.
I got a double second.
Maybe use a third.
We had, I think, a productive and interesting conversation around this already at the table when we were having the public hearing. My intent here is simply to make sure that the possibility for an employer to withhold wages for this income tax is, is there, but not to require it, so as to not create a burden on all employers in our community, but certainly to allow those who want to be nice and help their employees in that way to do it, so.
Andrea?
So I just kind of, you know, I've been following this, but not with a fine-toothed comb. Are we, have we already figured out the mechanism which, which we're going to be collecting this?
Not definitively, but we've been talking with the city of Portland about administering the collection for us.
So would this type of a motion pre, put a mention any of, of a smooth operation of that?
No, no.
Okay.
I think Mike said, you know, it would be optional for employers to withhold, it would be helpful for those that wanted to withhold for their employees, and it would also be helpful in terms of collection activities to actually have withholdings as opposed to not. Also helps with cash flow as revenues come in sooner. So it's a good thing to withhold, but we wouldn't, we don't have to require it.
And this makes explicit what our intention had been. It had never been our intention to actually require withholding. So this motion, from our perspective, isn't a problem.
Okay. Alan?
I have another amendment when time comes after this conversation. Status of those negotiations about the mechanism for collecting and figuring out the tax?
Yeah, we're continuing to have discussions with the city of Portland. We haven't completed those discussions. I would say two things. One is, they have a tax due date of April 15th, so they've been really busy, and haven't been able to, to spend as much time on this as, you know, maybe they might have in another environment. And our staff has also, I mean, we put all of our available resources towards helping you get this measure on the ballot and preparing the ordinance, and we've now had to turn our main part of our attention to putting together the city's budget and getting prepared for the budget committee. So, we're working on it, but it's, you know.
Okay. Been a lot of conversation about, we have no idea how much is this gonna cost, which I don't think is even close to the truth. Is there anything that you've got to so far that has made you believe that our original estimate of the cost is gonna be anything but really close to what the actual costs are gonna be? How much confidence do you have in your original estimate that the actual costs are gonna be that, that, be about as approximate to your estimate?
I haven't-
What was that number?
So, what we have said was something that was reported in the register guard, and that was a combination of taxes that would be lost from folks who avoid paying taxes, evade taxes, folks who are exempt from paying taxes, and the cost of collection. So we lumped that all together and told the register guard for Resolution 5023, which is not the one that's on the ballot, but the one just before that, that the total revenue would be around 24 million, which would be about $7 million more than the, the net that would go to schools. But we haven't broken it down farther than that, and I don't have any information that would lead me to believe anything different at this point.
Okay. And in your, in your conversations with the city of Portland to administer the tax, were pretty much on line what you originally thought? Have confidence that that number's gonna be pretty close to?
You know, yeah, I suppose so.
Okay. Thanks.
I have heard from the proponents for this, that in their conversations with Portland, they've been told it would be 5 percent for administering it.
That, that was something the city of Portland said early on. They are continuing to work on that. I think that was based on Multnomah County and their experience. Ours may be different. And I would also mention that in addition to paying the city of Portland to collect the tax, there will be other activities that the city of Eugene will have to undertake to administer. So that doesn't necessarily represent the full range of activities that we would need in a budget for administering a tax. But we're working on trying to pull that together.
George, Brown, and Patton, and Betty.
Do you know if the, if Multnomah County required employers to withhold?
They-
Or was that optional up there also?
They required Multnomah County, the city of Portland, and the beneficiary school districts to withhold, and all other withholding was optional. And they had a very, very long list of employers that chose to withhold.
Chose to withhold?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would think that that would not be that big of a deal for most employers. It wouldn't be for us, because we already have programs that withhold all of the federal and state stuff anyway, so. And pension things, and retirement, and all that stuff, so it seems like adding one more element to that wouldn't be that big of a thing. I'm not anticipating any problems personally. Okay. I'd just like to point out that some of the cost is presented as being avoidance and evasion, which I don't know if is a true cost anyway. We've eliminated, by adjusting the rates for the tax, to exclude people at the lowest end, at lower end of incomes, we've actually eliminated most of the evasion and avoidance elements. It was as high as 50 percent for some of the very lowest income levels, and we've eliminated all of those. And now the ones that are left are very, very low, except when you get, interestingly enough, except when you get to the very highest tier of income, and then it's, the avoidance starts to go up a little bit, the other state figures that were provided us. So, actually, the avoidance and evasion will be pretty low with the target group now.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. My main comment was regarding the motion, not the amendment, but regarding the amendment, the estimate of 5 percent would appear to be about $1.2 million for Multnomah to collect if 5 percent is accurate. That's just math.
Of 20-
Of 24 million, if 24 million is accurate. And then, Sue, Ms. Council George, you said that about seven, the total revenue is 24 million, 7 million more than the net to schools. So of the 24 million, $7 million would actually not be realized in, by the schools for cushioning or supplementing their budget?
I, the, the $24 million, which is not related to Measure 20-182, it was the resolution you passed before that-
503.
Was in response to a question about the gross amount of revenue that might be possible from this tax. Right? So, that, that includes folks who are exempt, as an example. So, that revenue doesn't come in to start with, right? Same thing with evasion and avoidance. That revenue doesn't actually, well, evasion eventually we would hope to collect, but avoidance, that, those are legal activities to not have to pay the tax, and so that revenue doesn't ever actually come in.
And just to clarify, in my mind, the $24 million then, that the register guard reported earlier regarding Resolution 5023, the $24 million would have included the, the folks who would evade, and also people who are exempt.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what the, approximately $7 million. And that is, that is inclusive of the 5 percent collection by Multnomah County, or is it 5 percent collection beyond that $7 million estimate?
That would include the cost of collection, which is not necessarily 5 percent.
Yes, that's, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
So before I turn to Betty, just to be clear, 'cause we've been talking about 24, that is not what we're talking about today. We're talking about 16.8, right? So that's a, there's a difference in that, and in terms of avoidance and evasion, that happens no matter what kind of tax we're doing. That's just part of, of the process of taxation. It has nothing to do with this in particular, or-
That's correct. But, but I would say that the question that the register guard asked was, if the amount that goes to schools is 16.8 million, what, what's the, and that's the net that the schools get, what's the sort of gross amount of the tax? And that's what the 24 million was, on Resolution 5023.
I'm just a little, make sure I'm not confused on this. The 16.8 then would, would already be excluding the avoidance and excluding the exemption, but not excluding the collection?
No, excluding the collection.
Excluding the collection.
So that's the net amount that would go to schools.
Thank you, 16.8. 24 is what it was. Okay, so, thank you.
It's your turn.
Thank you. What difference would it make if we pass this amendment? Would it make any difference?
The amendment would-
I know what it says, but-
It would guarantee that the city manager could not, should he change his mind, require employers to withhold.
And, so who benefits from the amendment? Anybody?
The, it, well, in part, staff benefits from the amendment, because if anybody comes to us and argues that we should require withholding, we could say the ordinance doesn't allow us to do that. Employers benefit because they don't have to worry about whether the city manager is going to adopt a rule requiring withholding. This still allows the city manager to adopt rules to enable employers to withhold if the employer wants to do it, and if an employee wants to do it. So it's enabling, it doesn't, it just ensures that nobody, that the manager can't require withholding.
And it might make it easier to avoid the tax.
Speculative.
If-
It would be very difficult to avoid if your employer's taking it up.
Just move to Springfield, that wouldn't be that bad.
Oh, I think everybody moved to Springfield.
Might be surprised, probably.
I don't see a perfect one. Yeah, okay, that's all, thanks.
Thank you. A reason for my amendment, or another reason in kind of response to a good point that George brought up, is the idea that when someone's a resident of the United States, or a resident of the state of Oregon, and employers are required to withhold for that, it's a fairly simple process to kind of understand whether those folks are in fact living in the United States or living in Oregon. But the idea of whether or not somebody lives in Eugene or not is a much more complex question. There are people who live, for example, in Glenwood, whose address says Eugene. There are people who live in River Road in Santa Clara, about 22,000 of them, I think, whose address says Eugene, but they don't live within the city limits, so the tax doesn't apply to them. And so, if an employer is forced to do this, the mechanism that they'll have to go through to, to try and figure out whether someone is or isn't a city of Eugene resident, may be complex if they have a large number of employees. Not necessarily, but it may be. And they would, if we required them to do so, they would be required to then prove that somebody did or didn't live in Eugene. And for example, if someone lived in the River Road area and did live in the city, but said, "No, I, I live in the county," you know, wink, wink, why? That employer would have the responsibility to prove that they were city of Eugene residents if we compelled it. And I think it's an over, over burdensome thing to put on every company in town and could hurt the economy, so that's the reason for my amendment.
Alan?
So we have various taxes. We don't, we have property taxes that are, which are, are paid, and they're not withheld, but we have the LTD payroll tax, that's countywide. So do we have any, so we don't have any actual local taxes that are withheld, except for the LTD payroll tax, which is countywide, and that's, if you live in Lake County, you live in Lake County, which isn't much different than figuring out if you live in Eugene or if you live in Lake County.
Correct.
So, so the effect of this is to actually, was the initial intent by the city manager in the language written here to actually require that they withhold? That wasn't the intent.
No.
So this is, this just makes it clear that it's, it's an option to do that, and if employers, employees want their employer to withhold this tax, they can request that.
Correct.
But they're not required to do it.
Correct.
And that makes it easier for them to deal with the tax, 'cause it'll only be collected in the regular taxing, or payroll system and sent to the city of Eugene. Right? And then, actually, I think it would help with people, avoidance, if we had made it mandatory, but I don't think we're gonna go there. Thanks.
All right, so let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Now we'll vote on the motion as amended. Yes?
I have another amendment.
Okay.
It's the second one on the, on the first page of the AIS. And so I would move to amend Section 3 of the ordinance by adding the following sentence after the first sentence. "It is the intent of the city council that the sunset should not be extended or repealed unless approved by the voters."
Second?
Moved in second. Sure.
So the, the intent here is to make it as politically untenable as, as possible to, to extend this without a vote of the people. So by putting this and making it clear what our intent is, I think in several years from now, when the sun sets, it will, this is an extra hurdle the city council will have to get over to, to deal with, and they'll have to actually, and I will be there, whether I'm on a council or not, to bring this up and say, "The intent of this council is to do this, so you need to be explicit about that you're overruling that intent," and, and ask them why. So I want, I want to make it very clear that my intent, and I think the content of the council that sits here now, is to make this be a temporary tax and only be for the four years. So by passing this, I think we make that very clear.
I appreciate that, Alan. I don't think I'm gonna have to vote on this, but if I were going to, I would support that. I think that's the intention. Thank you. Pat, you're next, and then George.
Just a clarification from the attorney, perhaps, please. If we pass this amendment, in fact, it doesn't bind future city councils.
It does not bind future city couns-
Just as-
It does not legally bind future city councils.
It is, as Councilor Zelenka says, one more obstacle, one more hurdle that future city council would have to overcome to extend.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
George, and then Mike, and then Alan.
Yeah, I think this makes, this is to make clear our intent. Many of the opponents of the tax have been spreading this false fear that this future council would, for some reason, take it into their head to extend this indefinitely, without referring it to ballot. In fact, we could have done that this time. We could have created this tax and said, "Well, we're not, we don't have to refer this, we'll just go ahead and vote for it." But we didn't, we chose not to do that. In fact, it would have been impossible, really, with, with this council. This council never would have approved that without referring it to ballot, and it's just, I have a really hard time believing that a future council in four years would, would choose to act independently that way without re-referring this tax to the voters. In fact, there may be new councilors here, four years from now. So this would be a thing for people to ask them while they're campaigning for this position, is, "What would you do? What will you do when this thing sunsets? Will you vote? If it needs to be extended, would you vote for it to be put to the ballot or not? Or would you just go ahead and do that unilaterally?" I think I know what the answer would be. The answer would be 100 percent, no. We would refer it to, we would refer this to ballot and let the people decide whether they want to be taxed to keep their public school system whole, so I'm gonna support this amendment.
Mike?
I'll vote in support of this, because I too am in favor of this being temporary if it should pass through the voters, and I certainly would want our intention declared, even though we're on, we in the future, or on other councils, are certainly under no obligation to follow our direction at this table at this time. And I must say, I don't believe it's a false fear in any way, shape, or form. I, I think it's a very real one, because I can certainly imagine many circumstances under which an emergency could rise in our community, and in its wisdom, a future council could find this an appropriate mechanism to try to solve that problem, whatever it is. We certainly see problems arise that we didn't expect here and there, or we see problems arise that we have seen coming for years, and then at the, you know, at, at some hour, we decide to address them. So I don't think it's a false fear at all. And I suppose I would ask Glenn, when we, when we voted, when the council majority voted to extend the temporary gas tax, did the temporary gas tax have a comment in it like this in the first place?
I don't remember. It was sunset.
But it was intended to be temporary when we passed it initially, and we found a reason why, you know, the, or rather, I should say, the council majority found a reason why it was important to extend it. So I don't consider that a false fear at all.
Alan?
My recollection of the gas tax was that we were making it sunset to see if the county, if the legislature would fix the problem, and then when we got to that point, they didn't, and we were stuck with putting, blasting a giant hole in our road fund if we didn't extend the gas tax and make it permanent, and they still-
Good reason.
Yet not fix that problem, so I stand behind that vote. My understanding is that almost every council action is non-binding. There are a few instances where they, where it is binding on future councils. Under what circumstances would they be binding?
It depends on what you mean by binding. When the council adopts an ordinance, the council is free to follow the charter process for amending that ordinance. Situations where things, in a sense, become out of your control, if the council decides to issue a bond, and the city issues that bond, you can't later decide, "Oops, we didn't want to do this, just cancel it." If the city council instructs the manager to go negotiate, and he's authorized to sell property, and he signs a contract for the sale of the property based on the council's action, but before the property transaction actually closes, the council says, "Oops, we made a mistake, manager, cancel that," the contract is binding. Oftentimes, contracts for the sale of property will contain a clause that says the court can specifically enforce it, and so even though the council says, "Oh, we changed our mind," it's too late. The manager signed the contract based on the council's authorization. So in those situations, you really aren't able to change your mind, but if you're dealing with an ordinance, or if you're dealing with a policy, as long as you follow the process that is laid out in the code or laid out in the charter, you can alter something. The charter does have provisions, I mean, if there's something in the charter that says the council shall do X or shall not do X, the charter's binding on you, you can't do anything about that. And the charter does contain a provision on, quote, "protected ordinances," which can be used through the initiative process. That's harder to change than just a normal ordinance.
So unless it's in the charter, we can't really, we can change almost any decision that a, a future council can change almost any decision that a council made. So that's been true forever.
Right.
And can the city change, can the council change the charter?
The council can refer to the voters to change to the charter.
But the city council cannot itself change the charter, it has to go to a vote of the people.
Correct.
So, and, and those protected initiative petitions can be placed into the charter, and the council cannot change them.
Right. Anything placed into the charter, the council lacks authority to change, so the, the tox is right to know provisions were done as a charter amendment, and one of the reasons why the proponents said they were doing it as a charter amendment was to make sure that the city council did not change the details of those provisions.
Right. And we don't do that very often, we don't do charter amendments.
Right.
Right, that's, charter's supposed to be something that's overarching, okay, instead of ordinance. Thank you.
We're gonna go do a vote on your amendment, and I just, my final comment about that is, in fact, the measure that, this one is based on the Multnomah County one did sunset after four years. Let's vote on this, okay? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition. We're back to the main motion as amended. Further discussion? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'll, I'll be voting against the final motion. I, as someone who has kids in our local schools, the quality of our schools mean a great deal to me, and that's why I advocated the idea of looking at ways we might address or be able to help the district in the fall after the legislature, legislature had completed their work so we could be effective at that. I don't believe this measure is an effective way to help them. As a matter of fact, I'll, I'll go further and say, I think it can harm schools. I think that it will certainly, in my opinion, harm our local economy, and it can harm families. So I, I can't say this is a good solution to the problem that all of us care about trying to fix. Thank you.
Pat, and then George pulling.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, the, the motion, the amendment we just passed, and part of the motion that we're debating right now, just very clear, future councils can change it. And as far as fear is concerned, people in general do have fear that the council changes things that past councils have done, even sometimes changes things that past voters have voted on. So, that fear does exist, and it's real. Regarding the ordinance, I'm concerned that it's not complete, and that we really fully don't know how we're going to collect it at this point in time. I pushed for this thing to be done in November rather than in May. If we, if it had been done in November- If we, if it had been done in November, sometime after the budget process, then our professional staff would have had more time to devote to the details of making an ordinance that is clear and that people will know, that will have the clarity of it by the time they vote. So consequently, I just have questions, first off regarding the ordinance, that even go beyond the problems that I've always stated regarding adding to Oregonians' income taxes, which is, which is a serious issue for me. Oregonians already pay among the highest income taxes in the nation. So I will be voting against the ordinance.
Okay, we're going to go to George.
Okay, thank you. Well, I agree with Pat's comments about the timeliness. And when we had our first discussions on this, I, I too was trying to push it into the November election, knowing that our budget process was coming up and that it was going to take staff time away from the budget process to work on this. I do have some questions about the mechanics of it that are still, and Sue, it's not your fault that you don't have the answers to it, but, I mean, you've done a yeoman's job on, on the work on it, but because of too many unknowns, we don't know. It's plain and simple. I also cannot support, just as I stated at the very beginning of the discussion, that it's unfair. It's an unfair tax to people that, that live inside the city, that don't have kids, that live outside the city limits, that have kids. We have students that live in Lynn County. We have people that live inside the city of Eugene that are in the Junction City School District. It doesn't make sense that somebody that is sending their kids to Junction City has to pay a school tax to the city of Eugene. So to me, it just, there's so many other different points that it's unfair. It's not going to fix the problem. It's going to just be temporary gap. And as the recent discussion of a newspaper article about comments that the governor made, with some of the same comments I made at the very first, the time we discussed this, that I think by us passing this is going to make it easier for the state to kind of just put it a little bit farther on the back burner. Yes, they've infused some money for this year into the public schools, but, you know, they're, as far as I'm concerned, the state folks are going to look at this and say, hey, look, all the local jurisdictions are willing to take this on to try and solve it. So it's not that big of an issue, even though it's been declining since 1983 and now all of a sudden now it's an emergency. So I just cannot support this for those reasons.
Alan?
I, I think we have a high income tax because we don't have a sales tax. And a three-legged stool means if one of the legs isn't there, the other two have to make up for the difference. So when you see low-income tax states, they also have a sales tax. So you get the trade-off. We're not going to have a sales tax. We voted that down one 18 times.
Let's do it.
So we're, so we're stuck with the two taxes, property tax and income tax. You know, no tax is perfect. This one's not. All of them have warts, but I think that this one is workable and it gets to accomplish is what we're trying to accomplish. I, I agree that it's the legislature's responsibility to fund education, but frankly, they failed to do that. And they failed to solve it. And they, I don't see a plan to do that coming out of the legislature right now. And I think enough is enough. I do not want to sit idly by and watch our school year get shortened even further. And I don't want to sit idly by and watch our class sizes get increased way beyond what's workable. So that's why I'm supportive of this tax. I think the structure is fair and equitable. It's not fair to make people who are already struggling below the poverty line to pay more. And this structure simply puts those people out of the, out of the system and puts those people who can afford to pay more to actually pay more. So that's, I think that's a fair and equitable structure. So I support the, the ballot measure and I support this measure, or motion.
George.
Well, I'd just like to go back to the gas tax vote, which opponents and several councilors keep bringing up. We agreed to extend it for all the reasons that Councilor Zelenka mentioned a few minutes earlier. And it wasn't just the council majority, it was everybody on the council. It was a seven to nothing vote with Councilor Solomon absent. So, you know, with the whole, the whole, the whole council agreed to do that. Regarding the item in the discussion right now, it's, the most unfair thing of all would be not, not to pass this. Because that will put, increase the burden on teachers, increase classroom size, shorten instructional year. It will really harm our students. It'll be, it is, this is the crisis year. All the cuts up to now have been little incremental chips, chip here, chip there, chip here, chip there. This is the, we're at the cliff. When you let go of 100 teachers in one year and cut 10 more days from the instructional year, that's, that's not crying wolf. That's, that is the crisis. The crisis is here. And, you know, the teachers just can't possibly devote, devote the time to 30, 35 kids or more in elementary school. That's, that's when the children are learning how to learn. And that's when they need more attention from the teacher than, than later. They need it. The earlier the better. And then they won't, they will surely suffer. It's known, it's proven, that you get better results with smaller classrooms. You can't possibly get good results with a shorter school year. So it's, I'm obviously going to support the measure.
Did you note we're sort of 15, 20 minutes now over the time allotted for this, but it seems an important topic and we've just, just let everybody have their chance to talk. And so, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with a lot of what Alan and George are saying with regard to the quality of schools and the importance of it. I agree with them about the idea that it's, it's horrific and awful to cut school days and to, to make, to put the, the children into classes that have higher numbers of cla, of, of students than is wise to, to do for a good learning environment. But the solution to that problem, that's, that's kind of a forced problem because we're only able to deal with one side of the balance sheet in this particular equation, which argues that it's, we shouldn't be attempting to fix this if it has negative consequences, even ones we don't intend. Because the real solution to the problems laid out there is to control the costs of the education process. Now, that's the legislature's job. I'd be happy if they, you know, if the court decisions put the local school districts in charge of what they were able to, to do with regard to costs. If the local school districts could decide on their PERS agreements and on their agreements for compensation to their employees, and they could make all the decisions and control the situation, I have no doubt we'd have world-class schools in Eugene. But they're not in control of that. And so it's, I don't think it's a good idea for us to try to solve the problem, although we may have good intentions, by doing something that will ultimately harm the school by continuing the same problem and not genuinely fixing it. So I just can't support it.
Chris?
We need to spend a lot of time talking about this issue because at the core, and I'll speak for myself, I'm uncomfortable. We're all uncomfortable. I think proponents and opponents are all uncomfortable. We're uncomfortable having to do this in the first place. We're uncomfortable with the mechanism because it would be great if this could be fixed in a more elegant and different way. But that ain't going to happen. We've been watching for the last 20 years for the legislature to fix this problem. And in the last 20 years, the legislature has not fixed this problem. I don't expect them to fix this problem. I don't necessarily like this solution, but I support it because at the very end, I don't want to hurt kids. That's what this boils down to for me. I spent 11 years on the 4J School Board and every single year, with the exception of one, we had to cut budgets. Layoff teachers, cut budgets, layoff teachers, cut budgets. And in the end, the residents of Eugene weren't hurt, the teachers weren't hurt, the administrators weren't hurt, the taxpayers weren't hurt, the kids were the people that got hurt. Those are the ones that felt the problem. I agree with most everything that's been said about the fact the school district is challenged. It's challenged with the need to reinvent itself. And it needs to reinvent itself in a significant way. But do we need to, I can't see the clock, I don't know what I'm doing here. But we need to, and for me, this temporary measure is an effort to try to buy some time as we work to reinvent the district. If I thought I was just voting for a measure to perpetuate the existing system, I would be, I would be reluctant to do that. But all my conversations have been, I'm willing to help kids for four years as we work to try to create a solution. Whether that happens or not is once again predicting the future, which we also spend a lot of time talking about because the more we don't know the future, the more we spend trying to talk about it. So with that in mind, I, I will support the measure because in the end, I think it is the way we can help to try to preserve our children's education as long as we can, as we work to do other things. If Salem can do it, that'll be great. I will be surprised. I will be impressed. I don't want to continue this tax because I don't think this is ultimately the best solution for long-term solution to the schools. But I can't stand one more year of having to hurt kids in order to make some sort of a, of a change, or, or help, or do something. I got tired of doing that. I can't do it anymore. So I would have liked to have gone in September or, or November. I think that would have been great, but this is, this is what the folks wanted. And I'm willing to put this on the ballot if that's what they wanted to do. So I'll support it, but I don't see this as the ultimate fix.
Eddie?
Well, obviously, it is not the ultimate fix or the ideal fix, but it's all we have at the moment. And not only will I care about hurting kids, I care about hurting teachers too, I think. I can see teachers quitting with, I wouldn't, I'd probably walk out of the classroom now I taught for, if I had classes the size that some people do year after year. It, because you can't do the job. I, and also, those of you who care about the economy, I think we all do, but some of you talk about it more than others, it's bad for the economy to have bad schools. And I think that is very clear, that it's one, it's one of the most important things to have a healthy economy, have a good education system. And this is an emergency. It's not the ideal solution, but it's a partial temporary solution. And I will support it. Thank you.
I heard someone refer to this this morning as a, for the, for the little city that could, that trying to take on and try to help and keep the further bleeding from happening. The best analogy that I can give is similar to the road bond. When we pass the road bond for a short period of time with a small amount of money, we said, here's what you get for that small amount of money. You get these roads fixed. And we'll have a citizen board to oversee it, to make sure that that's what it's used for. Similarly, this is set up so that we say, we know it's not fixing our education funding issue, just as our road bond did not fix every road in Eugene. What we do know is that if we pass this, we won't have fewer days and may get some of our days back for our children in school. We know that we won't get bigger classes. We will get some reduction in the numbers of students in classes. And so people will actually get to see the results. And there's an oversight committee to make sure that the funding is used for those purposes alone. So there is a transparency and an accountability put in, put in this. And when it's done, people should be able to tell people, they didn't fix it, but this is what you got for it. These are the things that you wouldn't have gotten if you got, because you invested in our children. So with that, let's vote on the measure. All those in favor?
Five in favor, none in opposition?
Three in opposition. Yes.
I was trying to fake out. Almost worked too.
I know, I do. It's like, what?
Okay.
I'm tricky that way.
Running way behind, we're going to go right up into the next action that we didn't get done on Monday. And that is the resolution on--
I hope somebody says that. We're not supposed to look at that.
Street assessments. Yeah, council president's going to put it on, the motion on the table.
I move to adopt Resolution 5029, amending Resolution 4281, providing an additional way for property owners subject to a Crest Drive area street improvement project assessment to qualify for the street subsidy program.
Moved in seconded. I've got Andrea, and then I've got George Poling.
Thank you, Mayor. So, hi, how are you?
Fine.
So does this basically, tell me what this resolution does.
I'll defer that to Glenn.
This resolution allows people who, it's only for Crest Drive, and it allows people who lost their job or had a significant change in income than what they would have had since the last fall, October, November, when they would have been able to apply to the subsidy program before, to now say, change in circumstances, lost my job, income way reduced, I now qualify. And so they can now apply for the subsidy program. So what the city would do is, they apply, the city basically would say, okay, so what's your income now? Do you qualify? If they qualify, they could be approved for the subsidy. It just gives people one more opportunity to apply for the subsidy program.
So, that's, thank you for that. It kind of clarifies for me because my interpretation of this is that we're changing the rules.
You are changing the rules related to the subsidy program for Crest Drive?
And, and, you know, I, I'm, I think I'm, you know, I've been accused of being a bleeding heart, but, you know, I also like to think that I, that I uphold the rules. And my challenge is that, I mean, you know, this, we could have applied this to folks on Elmira. And, you know, nobody came forward and people took it, you know? And I don't know how many people, you know, what the population was, if more people had already, were taking advantage of this. And so there wasn't a need because they were already in that income tax bracket. But it just, it just feels like we're changing the rules. And that is the one thing that I, you know, I just kind of have this, there's very, I mean, I can waiver on some things, but for me, I just feel like, I can't support the resolution. I'm just going to say it straight up because I just feel like it's changing the rules.
George Poling, you're next.
So this does not change the allocation of assessments to the property. It just changes the paying, the mechanism on how to pay it, correct?
It doesn't change the allocation, but it would, for those that would qualify, it would reduce their assessment.
Which would be an increase to what the city has to come up with?
That's correct.
And where does that money, where would that additional money come from? Or where does it come from in the first place?
It comes out of a, a fund called the Low Income Subsidy Fund.
Okay. So that low-income subsidy fund within the public works, right? Street maintenance or street department, whatever, wherever it is, can only be used for these type of projects or these type of folks? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't think that's necessarily true. I think it's more fungible than that. I think it was put into that, I don't know the full history of that, but I think it was put into that fund, and I'm not sure of the source, but it's not--
Is it SDC money?
No, it's not SDC's.
Could it be moved from that fund to, say, some street preservation project that's been waiting for a number of years to get fixed?
Yeah. Sue, do you know the history of the--
I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the intent was to establish that fund, you know, in 1981 for this purpose. But it, I mean, it goes back to that discussion we, you had about past council actions. It doesn't, I don't know that it's, that it has to stay there forever, but that was the intent at the time and the way the funds were set up for that program.
All right. And so it's, it hasn't been used except for this type of a, an assessment project--
Right.
--LID.
Right.
And it, has extra money's been put back into it as it's been used? Or does it just have the same amount continually and, you know, gaining interest?
Yeah. At this time, there's, at this point, if there's 30, after we pay out the Crest Low Income Subsidies, assuming, you know, prior to this discussion, there'd be about $35,000 left. And it's not, to my knowledge, we haven't added money to that over the years. It just, the initial amount has been gradually paid out, used as we've done assessment projects.
So do we have any plans to build that fund back up again once this program is, the Crest Drive project's paid off?
We haven't, haven't thought that far down the road.
Okay. That kind of concerns me about, once the funds are used, about how we're going to get that back. Because I'm sure we still have other projects that, that need this type of an assessment done on it. And also, like Andrea, you know, here we go again, changing the rules in the middle of the game. I have a real hard time moving the goalposts on people. I just don't think it's fair.
Hey, Mike, you're next.
I share both of those expressions of not wanting to change the rules in the middle of the game. At the same time, for me, the, the nature of our economy in the last couple of years has changed pretty dramatically. And there's a lot more volatility in how people, you know, their, their, their job positions have seen a great deal more volatility in the last couple of years. So I'm, I'm generally in favor of the idea of kind of just tweaking the criteria, which is what I see this doing, of saying, not only is it based on, you know, you can apply for some help based on what you made last year, but, you know, because of the volatility-- for some help based on what you made last year, but, you know, because of the volatility of the economy, you may have just lost your job two months ago and so...or a month ago. And if you base it on last year's income, that's not real anymore for you. So, it gives people who genuinely need the help, the chance to participate. My challenge is that it seems to only apply to this one particular part of town and this one particular project. Now, if for example...I guess, I would offer an amendment and I could support it if instead of the part of the motion where it says, "Providing an additional way for property owner is subject to a Crest Drive area street improvement project," if it said, "Subject to any future street improvement project," I could probably support that because we're changing the policy for anybody, any project as it moves forward. But I would wonder what the economic impact of doing, of changing the motion in that way would be.
Let me answer that one. The way this resolution is crafted, it applies to Crest Drive and it looks at income basically as of April 11, 2011. So, unless we did significant changes to the resolution, it couldn't do what you're talking about, Mike, because there are no other assessment projects where income as of April 11, 2011 is an important factor. So, if that's what you wanted to do, then you would need to direct us to come back with a, probably a very different form of resolution than what we've provided. And that would then further delay the Crest Drive assessments and interest costs and all that.
So, do I have understanding...do I understand appropriately then as well that this is simply a change to the criteria for the capacity to qualify for the program?
The street assessment, the street subsidy.
But it isn't the official action that we need to take next of implementing the assessment? Do I have that correct? That is still subject to a future action or is that wrapped up in this?
Future action. So, if you adopt this and people in the Crest Drive assessment area will be offered the opportunity to apply for the subsidy program again based on this criteria. Once those applications have been received, reviewed, approved or denied, then the ordinance will come back to you to do the actual assessment for the Crest Drive area.
I don't think we should have done that in the first place, but that was my lone vote. Thank you for the answer. I'm not sure how I'll vote on this yet because there's a conflict for me between, we're changing the rules in the middle of the game and if this passes, you have some people who could face some real ugly financial hardships and if we have the capacity to help and we should. So, I'm not sure how I'll vote just now.
Alan, you're next.
So, Mark, don't we put a date in each of the...when each one of these comes up, these assessments, don't we put a date in each one of them that refers to the income dates that we're looking at? So, in future years, we could just...or the next project, we could just say, we could just have that date be a much more contemporary date to when it's going to become, when we had to take action, right? It's not like...there's a blanket policy about how we do this, but we can change each subsequent one to be conformed with what we're doing here, right? And make that kind of the way that we do things.
Until the 35K is gone.
Then we're going to have to do what Mike suggested, which I agree with, but we can't do it here because it'd be too messy. But the next time we come up, we could just have a contemporary date that allows people to adjust their income or to assess their income.
So, if I understand what you're suggesting, so we have a resolution that established the Low Income Subsidy Program 20 years ago and we're amend...the proposal is to amend it for this project and then for each subsequent project, we'd have a resolution that would amend that?
Well, we have to have a resolution to do each one, right?
Right.
So, in that resolution, wouldn't we just have to have a date?
No, we have...the program was established by a council resolution and we've acted under that resolution for the last 20 years without any council action.
Based on that previous year's income?
Right.
Right. So, we would have to change our policy, which we could do in a subsequent meeting. Okay? Didn't we just change the rules on this program about a month ago where it used to be that this program only applied to low-income seniors and people that were disabled? And we changed it to all low-income?
We didn't change the subsidy program. What we changed was we...there was a provision that would allow people to defer their assessment until their property sold or changed ownership.
Right.
And that would be funded out of the same.
Regardless of whether or not they were just seniors or disabled.
Right.
Made it applicable to all.
The assessment would still be paid at some point, but it would be delayed until the property changed ownership.
Right, right. So, we did change the rules. So, you know, I guess we changed...I lost on that vote. That was a seven to one vote to change the rules midstream. So, I think we should have just had it be seniors and disabled, but we...about a month ago, we changed the rules and said it was okay. I don't see much difference here. I wanted to thank Council Taylor for bringing this up because this is a real issue as Mike was saying. There are particular people who have lost their jobs because of the hard economic times that we're in between what our policy was and today that would have an extremely high burden to overcome in order to pay this assessment because they lost their job. And that's not uncommon in this economic times. So, I thank Council Taylor for bringing this up. I think it's a word appealing for us to do. I was a little struck by the fact that it said, "Your income on this particular day." And, you know, somebody could play games and say, "Well, I didn't have any income on that day." So, but it's handled by the last part of Section 1. It says that income on any day during April extrapolated would be actually the test. So, it handles that for me. So, I'm going to support the amendment.
Okay. So, I've got Pat, Chris, Betty, George Polling and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. You've stated that about $35,000 will be left in the Low Income Subsidy Fund after the Crest Drive assess...or the Crest Drive allocation. How much is a Crest Drive...how much will be taken out of it for Crest Drive?
At this point, it's...there's 24 property owners that have qualified under the rules as they exist right now. And the subsidy is about $171,000.
Hundred and...so, it's...so, currently, there's about $200,000 and this will take $171,000 out of it. So, wow, leaving only $35,000 for any subsequent date changes that we may make on this. There's only $35,000 left in the fund. Okay. Now, the money for the fund originally came from general fund or anybody know where it originally came?
I don't know that.
But if we were to put money back in there, it would either come from SDCs or general fund or...
It would not come from SDCs.
It would not come from SDCs. But it kind of seems a little bit like tax increment financing by bailing these folks out. The rest of the city pays for it, kind of spreads it out over the rest of the city to pay for the $170,000 for Crest Drive. I mean, it's not tax increment financing, but it spreads the money out to the rest of the people in Eugene to pay for it. So, everybody in the rest of Eugene pays for the 24 property owners. Okay, that's clear then. Now, how does this differ from Elmira when we did the assessments? I'm assuming that this is a different situation, but what is the difference between this and the assessments that were levied for the improvements on Elmira Street? Or is it the same?
Well, I mean, I don't know that this...the situation is different. We had people on Elmira that qualified for the Low Income Subsidy before the ordinance letting the assessments were passed. And some of those people...and similarly with Old Cobra Road, and some of those people, their particular circumstances, they may have financed it through the city for 15 years and their circumstances may have changed since then. So, I don't know. But I mean, the...
Okay.
I don't know that the Crest situation is any different than Elmira or Old Cobra Road.
The basic situation is pretty much the same. It's just that we're looking to change the allocation of the emergency funds or the low-income funds by adding a different group of people to the qualifiers for the Low Income Fund. And these people are all in South Eugene Crest Drive. Okay, that's clear to me. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm just telling you that we do have a...actually need to have a discussion about a short one, we hope, on or at least begin the discussion in Ward redistricting because Kelly needs some direction from you. We're at 1 o'clock. I've got four people in the queue, so if you can be as quick as you can so we can get to the answer of this, so we can get a little something done today. Sorry, but these are...
Pretty topics, yes.
Yeah. I think as a matter of baseline, I think the current policy is probably good as we've amended it. I think it's fine. I don't think the basic policy needs to have a lot of tweaking because it does set a system. I also agree, we don't want to change rules in midstream. I don't think it's good to just change rules in midstream because it looks like you're being inconsistent. With that said, in this particular case, because of the fact we've just experienced the worst economic recession since the Great Depression, that's an extraordinary circumstance. And I think in that specific instance, it's worth making this one exception to change the rule just in this one case, just because it was such an extraordinary economic situation. I don't know how many people this affects, but I'm willing to consider it as a one-time deal just simply because it's extraordinary. But I don't like changing the rules as, you know, just a matter of course. So, I'm just saying categorically, this is not something that I like doing, want to do, necessarily need to do, but in this particular case, I'm willing to make this particular exception on this particular one in order to keep it moving forward and to be accommodating. So, that's okay. I'll vote for this. And I particularly like the fact that it's a single issue around a single assessment just because of the economic impact. So, I can support this, but I don't necessarily want to tweak or change the policy without a more thoughtful conversation.
Betty?
Okay. I don't even see this as changing rules. It's keeping the same rules, but considering the current income rather than the past income. And the rules are based on income, the low subsidy. And when people not only have a low income, but currently have no income, I think that that's within the intention of the rules at least. And I would like to have another conversation about a further conversation. We've made some good changes for the future, but I would like to have more conversation later, but this needs to be done now.
George Polling?
The delay in paying that Alan was referring to, was that specifically for this one or was that part of the street assessment policy changes that we made?
That was part of the policy changes.
So, it wouldn't apply to this? Okay, thank you. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. So, Mike?
Did I hear you correctly that as a part of our other revision, anybody who would be subject to this and is low-income has the opportunity to defer the tax until the sale of their property?
The change was it was either or. You could...so, on future local improvement districts, you could choose to...if you were...if you met the eligibility criteria, you could take a low-income subsidy or you could defer the...or anyone could defer the payment until their property changed hands.
Anyone.
Anyone. But you couldn't do both.
Okay.
So, if you were low-income, you could do both.
Does that apply to this particular project?
No. Those changes are all for future projects.
And that's one of those places where the charter says you can't...
You can't retroactively go back. Ah, all right.
Okay. So, I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four. All those in opposition, one, two, three, four. So, I'm going to come down on the side of the...you know, anytime you make a change, it doesn't affect the people before you. So, somebody didn't have somebody's making that...advocating for that for them previous to this one. So, I mean, that's just the way it is. With any time we make a change in policy, it starts where we start it and people before it didn't have the benefit of it. In this case, I think you have a larger...if you choose to, a larger discussion about how you might want to apply something more general. But in this case, this is, as Chris said, I just think this is a response to a really incredibly bad economy and a very difficult situation. It seems a little something we can do. So, I'll vote yes. It passes. Thank you. All right. We're going to go to Ward redistricting.
Mayor, can I make a declarative statement first before we do? It's kind of important.
I just wanted to say real quickly that I...my company works very, very closely with another company that does, that has created kind of the national gold standard for redistricting software. And I want to make it clear that although we've sold that software to legislatures all across the country, including the Oregon Legislature for redistricting as well as several counties, I have not been involved in any of the conversations with the City of Eugene's process. I won't make any money if the City of Eugene ever chooses to work with this company that I've partnered with. And...but it puts me in an odd place and I just wanted to be very declarative about that. I don't have any conflicts, but I also have some maybe helpful information. One of the things that our company's doing right...or the company that I'm working with is doing right now is making a free solution for everybody to participate, open to all the citizens of Dallas, Texas, because their council decided everybody should be able to have their say in the process. So, I wanted to make that declaration upfront.
Sorry, Mike, when you said that, I thought you wanted to make a statement over the last issue and you certainly...
No, no.
I was just making a declarative statement. I was just...
Just want to make it clear on this process here.
I understand. So, let's...City Manager?
I'll just turn it over to Kelly.
Kelly?
I'll try to be brief, so you have enough time to provide us the direction that we're craving on this issue. The last time you talked about Ward redistricting was in February. And our goals for today's work session are to learn from you, a determination on whether the council prefers to establish a separate committee to oversee the Ward redistricting process or if you want to take that role on yourselves. And there was discussion on both options last time. And we would also like to receive feedback on the timeline, which is in Attachment D. What we heard from you in February is that faster is better so that ideally you would be adopting new Ward boundaries earlier in the fall rather than in December. And so, the timeline shows that. Feedback would be helpful on that. Also, Attachment E includes a variety of criteria and what staff recommends is that May might be a time to shop those criteria, both through one-on-one conversations with individual counselors as well as through outreach with the community, which would include interested parties, web survey, perhaps a drop-in forum. Would you like me to stop now, Councilor Taylor?
No, I'm just asking you to get on the queue.
Okay, thanks. Just...I just...I didn't want to be rude and just see that hand up. Also, and if we were able to essentially shop those criteria in May, we would return to the council in June with criteria that could guide drawing of the boundaries. And then any other process elements, and those are largely outlined in Attachment C around public information and public involvement. So, feedback on those elements would be helpful to us. Just a few additional comments. Several staff from the Planning and Development Department will be supporting this project and they include Jason Dedrick, an associate planner, and Sarah Zaleski, a GIS technician, both of whom are here, as well as Laura Hammond, who works on community outreach and she was not able to be here today. We anticipate that Lynn Council of Governments, which works on this with other jurisdictions and has worked with the city, will be providing a consultative role for us so that we can align with Lynn County elections. Your packet also includes a Ward map showing where current elected officials, both from the City Council and Eugene Water and Electric Board live because all could be affected if boundaries are redrawn. And also a chart that shows information from the 2010 U.S. Census. And you can see what the percentages look like or the variation if all wards were to be resized to have equivalent populations. You can see that the wards that tend to be under and over in populations are 1, 2, 3 and 6. And so, that's also in your Ward packet. Just a few more quick things. We've already begun doing outreach to interested parties. Today, we're joined, for instance, by a couple, Pat Hocken from the League of Women Voters. The League takes a strong interest in this topic as well as representative from the Eugene Water and Electric Board. We also have made outreach to other organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, Citizens for Public Accountability and AAACP and others. And so, we've begun that. Just so that they know, this is on the radar and council is discussing the topic. One little technical thing I want to point out in case it occurred to any of you as you read your materials, you'll see that there are two population figures that are used, one in the Agenda Item Summary with one amount and one on the chart, your first attachment, that are slightly different just by a few hundred. I wanted to explain that. We get population information from the 2010 Census, but we work with census block information when we do the mapping. That can be especially challenging in the River Road and Santa Clara area. And so, we use a combination of census block and aerial photos so we can figure out, what are we looking at? Are we looking at... Are we looking at a street, or are we looking at a home? And so we have some refinement there, but they're very close. And with that, I'll pause.
So I think the first, if I understand right, the first thing you would really like to hear from the council about is whether they want to establish a committee to oversee the ward redistricting or take on the task themselves.
That is correct.
So let's hear about that first, if we could, and get that cleared up. So I've got Betty, and then Pat, and Andrea.
Thank you. Well, first, I think the council should do it, but I like your idea of interviewing each counselor separately. And then I think from, as a result of that, you could come up with some options for us when you know what each of us thinks. And, but I do think that your timeline earlier is good, but I think it should be before September 8. Actually, we should decide in August because people can start filing for office September 8.
September 8th?
Yeah, that's what I was told by the authority. And I think people need to know what ward they're in before they can file for office. And to give everybody a chance to, I really think we should try to have it done by August. And that it would be good if you could start doing interviews with individual counselors soon, whichever one of you is going to do that, and so that we all get to say what we, the criteria should be. I do think the council should do it rather than a committee. If we did decide to have a committee, I would suggest that we ask the Neighborhood Leaders' Council to suggest people from, I see somebody doesn't like that already, but.
Like everybody?
I think. Okay, I think, what my preference is that the council do it. I think it's our responsibility.
So I've got Pat, Andrea, and Mike, and Alan. Okay, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have questions that really aren't pertinent to the decision we're making today, but it's regarding the numbers.
Okay.
Portland State's numbers versus the official numbers that we're using, which are pretty different than the official numbers. And at some point, I'd like to get a clarification as to why Portland State's numbers are different. For instance, yes, Portland State had Ward 3 actually shrinking in size, while this, the numbers that we're using has it growing in size. So just some clarification on that. Realizing that these are the numbers we're using, but that's not going to change. So that I can, first off, understand it myself, and then be able to explain that to other people. You don't need to, unless you have a one-sentence answer.
I don't have a definitive answer, but I know when we talked in February about the PSU numbers, which we cautioned were very preliminary, we also noted that for Ward 3 at least, we wanted to be sure that there was an understanding that there were people in group housing situations that weren't counted, and we said we should probably assume an additional number. One thing that the U.S. Census does that may not be counted in PSU, and we can do further work, is, one thing we noted in this Agenda Item Summary is that for the purposes of the U.S. Census, students who live in Eugene, sleep, and attend classes here most of the time are counted as Eugene residents, for census purposes.
But not for voting purposes.
Right. So that may also account for the difference.
It does. So we're, we'll be making the adjustments based on these numbers, which don't necessarily take into account voting numbers. So these numbers would potentially skew the numbers to allow fewer voters in a particular ward. For instance, Ward 3, this is, that's a wording question. So fewer voters in Ward 3 than, for instance, Ward 6, which is the other end of the spectrum.
And just to address that in a slightly different way, one thing that's really important in terms of how districts are sized, whether it's at the Eugene City Council level or at state and federal levels, is part of rightsizing has to do with equal protection under the law. So even those who don't vote have a right to equal protection under the laws.
It's not about voting. Yes, I, thank you very much for that clarification. Be interesting to see what happens down in Florence.
Okay, Andrea, you're next.
I have an interesting comment on that.
So I like the council doing our own thing. The timeline for me is okay. You know, some people aren't going to file September 8th, or at all. And so what I would like to make sure is that we have any identified groups. I'll turn this in, and so then that'll make it easier for, or this in. And I guess the only other thing is that I would hope that you could help us set up public information stuff. I mean, I think that it's really important for us as counselors to go out into our communities and check in with them. I like that idea to do in a presentation at, at our community, neighborhood, neighborhood groups. Thank you.
And I would just add for the public who might watch this, that, just repeat, this is Kelly Osburn here, and I know that you would be, we want people to know that there are groups that we should be paying attention to that aren't on our radar yet, they should contact you at the city, right?
Yes, and we have a web presence, and we're also, and on the website are asking people to let us know if they want to be added to our interested parties list on this topic.
Just want to be sure that people know we're, we want to. Mike, you're next.
Yeah, I agree that the council should handle this. I think we'll be fine with that. I do, however, want us to put out for public process whatever it is that we come to at the end of the day, so that we can get a broad community kind of discussion about what we've put out there, and if we need to make any minor adjustments after that fact, and have some, you know, capacity, like, for people to comment on that and deal with it. Interestingly, Pat, what you brought up, the, the sense, we are, as I best understand it, bound by using census numbers despite what PSU has given us as estimates over the years. And as they get further from a census, they get further from a census. But the census are the official numbers. There's a department of the census called the CQR, the Count, what's the Q for? The Count Quality Resolution Department of the Census. And they have a three-point criteria for when they will adjust the numbers, and they have only ever done so in very limited circumstances. And it's interesting, because the technology exists, I'll just say, that you can literally figure out by matching up other databases where the census counts are off, because you can look at the blocks that don't match up to other databases about where people live, and know where the census blocks are incorrect. But they only will adjust the census numbers based on whether or not there was a transcription error, based on whether or not a house was not counted, a residence was not counted, and it's not the people, it's if a residence wasn't visited, or whether or not the multiple or group housing didn't capture everybody accurately who lives there. Those are the only three criteria under which the census will change the numbers. So I think what the census numbers are is what we are going to be, except as Kelly mentioned, with the group living situation does apply with a, with a strange twist there. So, but they only, in the, in the last, 10 years ago, they only changed, like, out of the 2800 applications for, and appeals for adjustment, I think they made 39 in the country, so.
So there is a chance.
There is a chance, that's right.
Okay, Alan, you're next. George.
I think it's a good process so far. I like where we're heading. I like the timeline. I think it is actually important to, by the time we have that date where people can file that we're, we're clear about where the boundaries are. I think it also should, the council should be the committee. If it's a subcommittee, we'll just have to bring it back to the committee and start all over again. That would be my worst fear on that one. The PSU numbers were really radically different for Ward 3, and it was because of what you were talking about, which is that the students in multifamily housing weren't completely counted in there, and if I recall correctly, it could have been as much as 3,500 people to adjust the Ward 3 numbers, which are probably better reflected in the census data. So it did make that PSU different, numbers for Ward 3 are particularly different. It also related to the amount of voters. Because of Ward 3, in particular, the West University Neighborhood is so high population students, they don't tend to vote in the same percentages as other age groups, especially seniors. And so the number of voters in Ward 3 tends to be a lot lower than the rest of the wards as well because of that fact. But all in all, we're required to use the census data, and so that's where we're heading. And the PSU numbers are interesting, but I guess not relevant.
Okay, George Poling.
Do you have any idea how far along the state and the county is on their process on this? And are there timelines similar to ours?
Timelines are different. Councilor Clark may know more than I do, but the, but this, but this, on this topic.
Thanks for the qualification, Kelly. I appreciate that. Well done.
That was an accident.
Oh, hey, it's all right. You know, granted, it's probably true.
We should have a break.
The county is working with, with a committee, and the state actually has a, has a mandate to deliver something to the governor, I believe, by July 1. So they are on a faster track than we are.
Yeah, I'd like to see us get it done as soon as possible, because there are people that are contemplating, you know, running for various city and county offices, and, you know, without knowing where you're, you know, which boundary you're going to be within, you don't know what to file for. So the sooner the better, and I'd like to see us have it done before we go on our summer break. I too believe that the council should be the one that works on it, and I like Mike's recommendations that he made earlier. And I said, the sooner the better.
So everybody has spoken to you, except for George, and Chris, do you have anything you, either one of you want to add to this? Not necessarily.
That's great.
So I think I heard council is a committee, is the, is the consensus here. Yes, you want to add some more information?
Well, I was just going to follow up there. The legislature has to have, by the end of their adjournment on June 30, so by the first, a complete plan presented. And the only hiccup to that is, of course, as probably most people know, is if they can't come to an agreement and get the governor to sign it, then it'll go to the Secretary of State, and the Secretary of State will then have a certain quantity of time, which I'm honestly not, I don't know what the deadline is for the Secretary of State to deliver a plan. But then there's an extra amount of time. The county will not take up its redistricting work until, I mean, in a, they have a committee they're forming that will begin the work, but they're not going to come to a complete plan until at least September. And depending on what the legislature does, they may be that late as well. And I don't know if their particular, the legislative districts could have an effect on our process, but may not. But I can't imagine whether or not the county's process would or would not have an effect on our process. Ten years ago, we didn't finish the city's process until December, as I understand it. And then the, the county then takes everything back once everybody finishes, and by the end of January of '12, they have to have all the precincts drawn with inside all of that, as I understand the schedule.
We all came out with longer necks.
The one, the one thing I do want to caution about the timeline, we'll hustle, and that will also require that the council will have to hustle, and as you know, it can be really hard to get on your agenda to do these check-ins. And summer also can be a challenging time to do public involvement in the community. And so we'll work the timeline in an effort to try to get as much done before you go on August recess, but I'm reluctant to guarantee we can do that, and we'll just continue to look to you for feedback to make sure that we're staying on track.
Did you get everything you needed, Kelly?
I think so. This has been very helpful.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That's the end of our meeting for today.
Thanks.
Did you want this, Kelly? Oh, did we need a motion?
We need a motion.
No, we don't, do we?
We need a motion.
Oh, we do, don't we? That's right.
We did.